I'd like to call the March fifteenth, the Ides of March meeting order. Kristia, we in Compliance and Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Could you make the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mr. Lennox?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Harkins?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mayor McCann?
Here.
All present, sir.
Thank you. Would you please join me if you'd pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing. Our invocation today be given by Pastor Steve. I heard that's your preferred name.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Let's bow our heads and pray. Lord, thank you for the day. And thank you for your creation, for the beauty of your creation here on Hilton Head Island. And thank you for this occasion. Lord, I start by praying for peace in Ukraine. I pray, dear God, in your sovereignty and grace, that you will protect life, innocent life there. I pray that you will draw back forces that are causing havoc in that country. Please protect. And Lord, I pray for peace here as well. I'm so thankful for those who serve on our front lines and pray that you will bless our police officers and our firefighters and EMS and others who are serving so faithfully. And then I thank you for these, your servants here, our mayor, our town council. Thank you so much for their willingness to serve in this way. I pray that conversation and debate will be civil and I pray that you will be pleased with all that transpires here. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Well, before we go on to the agenda, Pastor Steve is one of the group we have here for our 25 priests, rabbis, and ministers on the island that meet together all the time. And I sent each one of them a letter or an email yesterday. Dear clergy friends, in light of the heartbreaking war that is taking place in the Ukraine and now the deadly tragedies we happen to witness, I would like to know if you would like to participate in an island-wide call for prayer day for the Ukraine. We as a Hilton Head community can stand together, pray, and advocate for the world that is built on mutual respect and order, not based on tyranny and fear. My belief is that a collective call for prayer could only occur during this, should occur during March eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, dependent upon your existing worship schedules and takes place individually in respective houses of worship. I ask you to join me in prayer on those three days. We've gotten great receptive from this so far. Okay, the agenda?
Move for approval. Second.
Any questions on the agenda? Ball in favor, raise the right hand. Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes?
Move for approval.
Second, right there. Any questions on the minutes from either the twenty-second or the first? Any changes? Okay. Ball in favor, please raise their right hand. Thank you very much. Report of the town manager?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, mayor, council, members of the community. Just a couple of things. St. Patrick's Day Parade, it's my first parade. Thoroughly enjoyed being here with you, here with the community. It was very uplifting and what an experience. So, thank you to the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, to the staff that volunteered to help, to the community members, mayor, council, all of you definitely involved. So, just a great day all around and a reminder that we're about four weeks away from the RBC heritage. We can do it all over again. So, with that being said, great to be here. And I know that we have our chairman, Mr. Ray Casaya of the Parks and Rec Commission here today to give a semi-annual update. Hello, sir. And welcome.
Hello, Ray. Good afternoon. Unfortunately, I have come to that time in life when I have to start putting these on. Yeah, I'm telling you. It's like, you gotta be kidding. So, anyway. Mayor McCann, members of town council, staff members, thank you for this opportunity to come before you this afternoon to present this report on the activities of your Parks and Recreation Commission. Commission's been working hard on your behalf and indeed, it is an exciting time for Parks and Recreation on Hilton Head Island. In addition to the items listed in the written report that's in your packet, I would like to take a moment to first say thank you for your support for Parks and Recreation Services and facilities here in our community and to say thank you for the excellent staff supporting our initiatives and the work of the commission. Manager Orlando, Jennifer Ray, Taylor Ladd, Erin Black, and the rest of town staff, your town staff, have been great stewards for the town and are wonderful examples of service leadership. It is a great day to be involved in Parks and Recreation on the island. As I've stated before, a goal without a plan is just a wish and I'm happy to say that our work over the past few years, getting our plans together, articulating our shared vision for these services on our island, are bearing fruit in terms of the development of high-quality parks, walkable bike, bikable pathways, innovative recreation and cultural arts programs, and unique partnerships between the town and provider of recreation services. We're very excited about the ideas and strategies being developed for Crossings Park, Chaplain Park, and the Mid-Island property. And these future jewels in our park system not only will allow us to meet many of the needs addressed in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and our plan, they serve as additional building blocks to a system-wide portfolio of superior, best-in-class, state-of-the-art park and recreation facilities, which will enhance the livability and economic opportunities on our island. Like you, we are anxious, anxiously waiting to see the conceptual plans and drawings for the three parks and hope they will help guide us to discover the next best use of our resources across the island. Yes, great parks can do great things and your Parks and Recreation Commission is excited to continue its work to enhance the environmental, educational, and recreational resources of the town through a systematic approach to planning, public involvement, and coordinated redevelopment of our park and recreation system. Again, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them or I'll go sit down. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Guys do a great job. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. That concludes my report, mayor and council.
Thank you. Any general reports from members of council? Okay. Mr. Hawkins, the community services and public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several things. One, during the executive session of today's meeting, we'll be presenting a candidate for the design review board. Also, as a product from our last meeting, there are two items, three items, under twelve B, C, and D of today's agenda dealing with public comment in the Shell Ring development. So, more on that later. And then lastly, our next meeting is March the twenty-eighth. And at that meeting, a very important subject is going to be coming before us and we'll have a presentation from Peter Christian and Mark Baker dealing with the recommendation that we work together with the county on the development of a new long-term agreement that will secure for us landfill and recycling resources for the future. And why is this important? It's important because the existing facility that we have is nearing its lifespan and we need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ames?
Thank you, mayor. The public planning committee met on March ninth. First was an update on Palmetto Breeze and for the public's interest, they're proposing two adjustments to the route, one down Pope Avenue and another up by Port Royal and the Weston. The committee also reviewed a draft short-term rental ordinance and with a series of suggestions, sent it back to staff. And on March twenty-fourth, next Thursday, we will, the public planning committee will again review the short-term rental ordinance with an expectation that it will push it forward to council. Thank you.
Ms. Lennox?
Yes, thank you. The towns, finance, and administrative committee met this morning at ten o'clock with three agenda items. The first was a review of the affiliated agency grant applications for fiscal year 2023. There were seven applications and the committee unanimously approved sending a recommendation to the full town council. The second was the consideration of the resolution designating Green Finney as the independent auditors for the town for fiscal June thirty, 2022. That recommendation will also be coming to the full council for consideration. And the third was a very brief update on the financial performance of the town for the month of February. There were no adverse trends reported.
Thank you, sir. Okay, appearance by citizens. I'd like you to mind everybody that are citizens. Town rules and procedures apply for public comment. Once your name has been called, please state your name for the record. Each citizen has three months, three minutes, three minutes to talk, three months, three minutes to talk to address the town council. At the end of the three minutes, you'll be asked to conclude by your comments. Citizens are asked to maintain a decorum suitable for the meeting and refrain from using any profanity, abusive, or obscene gesture. Kristia, has anybody signed up for?
Yes, sir. Today, Mr. Skip Hoagland signed up to speak. Skip Hoagland, please. Mr. Hoagland?
Afternoon, Skip Hoagland, Whittmell Harbor. How much more corruption and dysfunction can taxpayers stand from this council? It's so bad, it's become an embarrassment. The entire council just keeps voting and rubber-stamping tax money to be legally and even criminally used, misused by not just our nonprofit chamber but others. This is not funny money or monopoly. Crook lawyer Josh Gruber just found guilty of three ethic violations and you still employ this man. Mr. McCann, you used tax money flying first class to Italy with Steve Riley. That's a disgrace. Mark Orlando caught lying and illegally using tax funds and town employees in Bluffton with Lisa Selka and highly crooked lawyer Terry Finger. Lawyer Stanford, past president of the secret Greater Underground Island Council, will not explain who picked him. Harkins, Lennox, McCann, all committed fraud and lied saying they saw the illegal chamber tax accounting. Lawyers Coltrane, Gruber, Bush, all committed fraud and schemed the legal tax-funded chamber contract with no accounting provision. Lennox and Ames committed fraud on the scheming of the chamber contract with crooked lawyer Finger in Bluffton. Ms. Becker remains silent on the chamber tax theft and I don't know why she won't speak up. Mr. Brown, I have no comment. He's a good man and I wish him the best. John Troyer, finance chair, Lennox Orlando have hired a town audit that they call a positive external audit report done by Green Finney Farm. This audit is a fraud. It's not an audit taxpayers can trust. I called Green Finney and asked them and they agreed this was just an audit of numbers that John Troyer, Lennox, and others handed them and would not catch crimes committed by town insiders. Only an external forensic audit can assure taxpayers no insider corruption like cheating, waste, embezzlement, fraud, kickbacks, payoffs, and stealing are happening. An audit done under GASS, general accepted auditing standards, will not catch crimes to taxpayer funds. We must demand that John Troyer, Orlando, Lennox agree to undergo a forensic audit. If not, they must have a lot to hide. How do you trust an audit when officials who control millions of our tax funds have committed corruption? It's time to clean this house. Mr. Lennox is a past banker. Will you agree to a forensic audit today, right now? If not, why not? Please respond to all taxpayers in this room. Of course you won't. Lennox, you, McCann, and Harkins will leave this council soon disgraced. A man is only as good as the good he leaves behind and he's supposed to leave things better than he found them. This council has failed us. It's despicable and you violated your campaign promises to all of us. You ought to be ashamed of yourself and your families, I'm sure, pity you for what you've done.
New business, first reading proposal, and it's twenty dash twenty-two dash seven, amending section three, one, two, ten of the municipal code of the town of Hilton Head Island.
Move for approval. Second.
Any questions on it?
I think we're talking about six single ward districts and in that regard, I'd like to amend the motion.
Mr. Gruber is going to give a presentation first or would you like to make the motion first?
Well, I'd like to amend the motion and Mr. Gruber can reference it in his presentation. I'd like to amend the motion for reasons of continuity to remove from Ward Three Bull Island and have it be included in Ward Five.
Okay. Got a second? I missed the answers. Wait a minute. Have a second? Okay. Discussion by members of the council?
As the maker of the motion, I agree with the amendment.
Okay. Ball in favor of the amendment, just give a signal so we know we're doing okay. Alex, okay?
We need a presentation first.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Orlando. Wanted to take this opportunity for not only the benefit of the people here in the audience but for also those folks that are at home watching this, to make sure that they have an opportunity to understand the entire process that we have gone through to get to where we are at today. We have been working on this diligently for a number of months now. It's something that only comes up once every ten years, so most folks usually aren't familiar with it until you've been through it. So, I think it's a good opportunity for us to just kind of take a quick step back, review everything that we've done, and then ultimately, you can move forward with the action that you have pending before you tonight. I know Krista's furiously working on trying to pull up the presentation. I am familiar with it enough that I can probably go ahead and start. Oh, look at that. Perfect timing. Pause for dramatic effect, right? All right. So, as I was starting to cover, today I wanted to just kind of go an overview of this project, where we've been, where we're going, where we're at now. The overview of the redistricting criteria that we relied upon as we were going through this process. I want to pay particular attention this afternoon to our public engagement efforts. I know that there was a question that had come up when this matter was coming out of committee. We've taken an opportunity to kind of pull all that together so we can present to you kind of a summary on what those public engagement and communication efforts have been. We're going to review what the public comments were that we've received through this process at this point. If there was a public comment that was received, we've addressed it. We've either incorporated it or we've acknowledged it in some way. And so, we just want to take an opportunity to kind of briefly go over all those so that everybody knows that this was truly an open process where we invited members of the public to provide insight and feedback and that we took that genuinely and seriously. And then lastly, focus on the alternative maps that were considered and then we'll review the one that's before you this evening because I think it'll be helpful to visually show what we're talking about with the amendment that was just made as we had a vigorous debate going on right before the start of this meeting about what that area was actually called. So, I thank you for calling it Bull Island because that was the best that we were able to come up with, but we'll make sure that we all look at it so that we all know what we're talking about together. So, again, this was in response to our decennial census. Every ten years, the federal government seeks to count the current population based upon the information that they obtained. Local jurisdictions are required to redraw their political boundaries, especially for those that have single-member districts. And so, we were required to redraw our district boundaries prior to our next general election, which is coming up in November of this year. And so, that is important because the filing for the town council seats, those that are on the ballot, will open up July first and they'll close on August fifteenth. So, we wanted to be diligent about this process because we want to give potential candidates the opportunity to know what district they may or may not reside in by the time that this process is over. So, we certainly wanted to be done well in advance of the July thirty-first filing period. Yes, sir?
The slide showed July first, I mean, July thirty-first. You said July first.
I'm sorry, it's July thirty-first. That is when it will open and then it closes on August fifteenth. So, here was the population figures based upon the new census numbers and as you can see, our population didn't grow significantly, but the population within the individual wards did change substantially. And so, because of that, we were required to go through and redraw our boundaries to bring those population numbers back in line with the constitutionally required limits. This was the town council boundaries as they exist today and so this was kind of the initial starting point. And then looking at the population numbers that were reflected here and provided to us by the state, we understood that we needed to reduce population in some districts and increase population in other districts in order to get within the margins that we know to be judicially acceptable. Council adopted the following criteria as part of this process. We were going to have districts that were of equal population. However, it's important to note that we have a tolerance of up to ten percent, so five percent above, five percent below, what that number is and still feel very comfortable that a map that went to that deviation would be found upheld and supported by the judicial branch. We were also going to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act to ensure that minorities have an equal opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. We were going to ensure that the districts would be drawn contiguous, contiguously, sorry, drawn contiguous so that they were all compact and touching all parts of the district and not spotty and all over the place. And then ultimately, to make sure that they represented the communities of interest that are here on the island to the extent that we can. So, in order to start this process, staff generated a preliminary map for purposes of just beginning the discussion on this matter. So, this is the map that was prepared by staff and brought forward to kickoff So this is the map that was prepared by staff and brought forward to kick off these discussions. As you can see, it made a number of changes, but again, it was just to get the ball rolling and bring those initial numbers back in line with what the tolerances were for this exercise. Additionally, the Finance and Administration Committee held a number of workshops over a series of weeks to gather public engagement effort on this matter. We met in multiple locations around the town to try to encourage different groups of people to come out. Ultimately, we did receive a number of comments. We're going to go over those here in a minute, but you can see just kind of the breadth of times that we've talked about this as we've tried to make people aware of what this process is, what it means to them, and allow for them to provide an opportunity to provide comments and feedback. In terms of our communications plan, we approached it from multiple avenues. In terms of news releases and digital marketing, we had different pieces that went out in both January and again in February. We've also developed a number of specific social media posts and campaigns. Those all went out in January and in February. They were on Facebook, Nextdoor, LinkedIn. We also then produced in-person paper materials. And so we had materials available for folks to pick up when they came into the workshops and we also had a QR code posted on that material so that if folks wanted to, it would redirect them to the town's website where we maintained a central hub of information related to this process as we were going through it. In terms of television, print, news media, we had a number of different opportunities to get coverage both in print and in television news media. And then ultimately, we were requested to focus and make sure that we were communicating with the Hispanic population on the island. In order to do that, you can see on the right-hand side there that we had our materials translated into Spanish. That information along with copies of the maps were provided to all of the organizations that you see on the left-hand side. We've gotten confirmation from a number of them. I want to highlight just kind of the Children's Center. They let us know that they distributed copies of the materials that we provided them to all of their participants and to all the parents, both electronically and in writing via a physical document. And then we've also produced videos. We've got a video in English and then the link there, which I'm not going to play this evening, but you can go to it. The link to that video is translated in Spanish, again, letting folks know about this process, what it means to them, and how they can provide information and comment to us so that we can potentially use it as part of this process. In focusing on the comments that we did receive, basically there was two categories. There were comments that we received that were not actionable for one reason or another and then there were other comments that were potentially actionable. And so every comment that was received fell into one of those two categories, but regardless of which category it fell in, we brought it forward for at least discussion. If it was actionable, we made it an alternative so that it could be specifically considered for whatever aspect was being proposed. Or if it was not actionable, we went through and explained why it was not. And so I'm going to just kind of highlight some of those now. So the first one that you have on the screen here, what it specifically referenced was a property owner who lived in this part of the island emailed us and asked if it would be possible to have his voting ward changed from what it currently is now to the adjoining ward. So it's currently in Ward 2 and the request was, could it be moved into the adjoining Ward 1 district? And we looked at this and from these discussions, the ward boundary itself, oh, let me see if I can do this correctly. So the ward boundary itself is actually very large. Starts up here, goes all the way down to here and then comes back up. And then it's got four individual little voting precincts, not precincts, but census blocks inside of it. And so for continuity purposes, you have to take the entire voting census block itself and the little donut holes that are within it. And so when you add that up, in this instance, that would be 1,100 people. And for your knowledge, with the number of folks that are on the island per the census, in order to be within a 5% tolerance either above or below, that number really couldn't exceed more than 330 people. That's really right where you get to the 5% deviation. So this request would have resulted in 1,100 people swinging from one district to another, which again, couldn't be accomplished without requiring substantial additional alterations otherwise in other districts. So again, this was a non-actionable item, but it was a comment that we received. Another question that we received was whether or not the wards on the island could be separated by the body of water, which is Broad Creek. And so staff looked at creating Ward 3 on the northern boundary of Broad Creek and Ward 4 on the southern boundary of Broad Creek. And ultimately, the population differences between this area and this area are so significant that it resulted in about a 1,200 person difference in Ward 4 as compared to Ward 3. So obviously, this was not an actionable item because it was not something that we could get to fit within that 5% deviation. We also received a request to look at trying to place as many historic neighborhoods in Ward 1 as possible. The map that you see in front of you is an overlay of both the proposed districts and the historic neighborhoods with the red hashed outlines on top of that. And we showed by looking at each one of these individual census tracts, how many people were in them and why they could or could not be brought in. And ultimately, we came down to the, the only one that really came close was right here. There was enough people that we could bring that in, but ultimately, we would have had to have made a change up here, probably somewhere to Ward 1, which would have taken an area out. And so at the end of the day, we weren't able to bring any additional areas into Ward 1 that were a historic neighborhood without having to remove some other area that was currently proposed to be in that ward. And then last, this wasn't really anything that we looked at from a change of boundary standpoint, but we were asked to consider where the minority populations were on the island. And again, it's kind of an extension of that last one that we looked at. So this looks at both Hispanic concentrations and African-American concentrations. And you can see really the only one that's outside of the analysis from Ward 1 is this district down here. And you can see the size of this census block. I believe if I recall correctly, it's about 580 people that are in that census block. So again, it wasn't really easy to be able to put that anywhere. And at this point, in order to have continuity, it really couldn't go anywhere else to get into Ward 1 or any other area. So those were all the comments that we'd received that were not actionable in nature. The one that was actionable in nature, this was the very first comment we received, the very first public meeting. And it was a question whether or not the area that staff had proposed to bring into Ward 3, I'm sorry, into Ward 4, from the North Forest Beach, South Forest Beach area, could be brought into Ward 3. And so in order to make that happen, we needed to change both the census blocks up here in Point Comfort and this little portion right here, just north of the North Forest Beach, South Forest Beach area in order to bring that in. But because the numbers did work, we brought it forward as an alternative for consideration. We then also heard very recently about basically the alternative to that, which is to keep Point Comfort in Ward 3 and then to move this area back into Ward 5. And again, this is a workable option because the numbers at this point do work. And so what I'm showing you here is basically the staff GIS map because this is what was initially proposed when staff brought this forward as the preliminary map. We also heard from individual members of town council. We gave them opportunity to sit down and walk through these maps with us and look at a wide variety of alternatives. And then those that said that they wanted to bring something forward for further consideration, we did. So this is Councilman Brown's alternatives. Ultimately, you can see the areas highlighted in red represent some kind of change in terms of the existing ward boundaries and then what was being proposed. The primary one with this one is bringing this census block into Ward 4, but moving these ones back into Ward 1. Those were not a part of the GIS map, or the GIS preliminary map, but that's what we worked on with Councilman Brown. But in order to make those numbers work, we needed to move this area into Ward 4 out of Ward 1 and then this area as well, out of Ward 6 into Ward 4. This was Councilman Becker's alternatives. Again, very similar in terms of moving some of the districts around. The big focus here was looking at making this area all contiguous, golly, I keep using the wrong syllable on that one, making this contiguous as far as District 4 goes. And then with Councilman Stanford, his comments were focused up on changing this area here from Ward 6 to Ward 2 and then from this area from Ward 2 to Ward 6. And so at the last Finance and Administration Committee workshop, staff was requested to take all the public comments that we had received and try to combine them together into one cohesive map to the extent that we could make the changes that had been requested work with each other respectively. And so ultimately, what that resulted in is this map right here, which was Alternative 5. This is the map that's ultimately pending before you this evening with the amendment. And I'm going to highlight that right now. My understanding, David, is that this area right here is the area that we've referred to as Bull Island, is best to our knowledge. And the proposed amendment would move this out of District 3 and into District 5. And if I recall correctly, it has 15 people in it. So from a numbers standpoint, I don't think that there's any issues with moving that in there because of how close the numbers are already. But if that's your understanding as well, then I think hopefully we're all on the same page as far as what that amendment will do between now and if this comes back for second reading. Again, just to focus on the numbers, this map, Alternative 5, is actually the tightest map that we have considered as we've gone through this process. The deviation in total is 3.8%. So obviously, we had upwards of a 10% deviation. The state recommended 5. And what we've come forward with out of the FODA committee meeting is a map that's 3.8% And that brings us up to where we are this evening. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Josh?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment that I think that the staff led by Josh Gruber has done an outstanding job, one in educating me and several of my colleagues up here to what this means, but most importantly, educating the public and giving the public the opportunity to respond and to react. And I think what we're coming forward with today is a perfect consolidation of all of that. So great job, well done.
Thank you.
Alex?
Thank you. And I echo Councilman Stanford's comments as far as the effort is concerned. Great job to staff. Just two comments, Mr. Gruber. One, the items that you've laid out as far as communications to Latino population, that's great, okay? I'd like us to use that as a template moving forward.
Yes.
And other items, okay? So appreciate that. And we talked maybe in session 2 or 3 about the communications that will happen to our residents after this is adopted. I know Board of Elections will take a stab at that, but I want to make sure that we remember that we should do something from the town also in terms of the ward changes as it affects folks where they're voting, okay? Thank you.
Yes, sir. And that actually raises a great point that I did not touch on as part of my presentation. So when council formally adopts its redrawn districts by ordinance, you know, first reading is pending this evening. So after second reading, we will transmit that formal ordinance and there's a meets and bounds description that goes with that that outlines the physical boundaries of each district. We will transmit that to the Beaufort County Board of Voter Registrations and Elections. They will then disseminate notice to any affected voters with regards to the upcoming elections about where the voting precincts may be or where their voting district may be if it in fact changes.
Any other issues by council?
And Josh, the smaller the deviation is, the stronger the map and more compliant the map is.
Yeah. The ultimate goal is to have equal representation. And what that means in terms of our wards is having an approximately equal number of people in each district. Now, obviously, it can't be an exact science and so there are tolerances that are there, but the closer we can get, the more proportionally representative each district is to one another.
Can you, thank you. Can you just remind me, so Bull Island, because I didn't hear this discussion from earlier, where was that initially, in our current map?
So at this point, I'm not sure that Bull Island has ever changed. So it's in Ward 3, I believe now. And was proposed to remain in Ward 3 with both the staff map and through all the alternatives. But Mr. Ames, as part of his motion this evening, has made an amendment that would move this from Ward 3 into Ward 5, primarily, I believe, for compactness concerns, where you see it kind of spatially laid out in relationship to the rest of the district. Certainly think it makes a good deal of sense to move it into District 5.
I think this map makes it a little bit more difficult to understand how contiguous it actually is because that portion of what used to be Ward 3 in Point Comfort is now a different color than, yeah, there.
Any other questions for Josh? Anybody from the public have a question? Any comments from the public? Okay.
Afternoon, Patsy Bryce. And no questions, just some comments, so I hope that's still appropriate. I'm representing the Coalition of Island Neighbors and key the word neighbors because we recognize all communities of interest on the island and have members from all communities, all neighbors on this island. Also, I'm on the board of the Legal Women Voters and we care about two things primarily. One is that the redistricting process and the maps that you, the map that you adopt complies with a criteria. In addition to that, yes, it is a numbers game, but the other part of the numbers is to make sure that no voting rights are diluted during the process. So there's some other standards as well. We're happy that you've been shooting for the 5, no more than 5% deviation. That is what we recommended rather than the 10%. So we're happy that you're within the 5%. In addition to that, honoring the communities of interest. And I appreciate the staff's response to our comments about reaching out to the Latinx, Hispanic community. It's nice that there are flyers and it's nice that they're in Spanish. The Coalition urged communications in Spanish during the onset of the pandemic two years ago and we're glad that the town is continuing to do that and hope you will continue to do that. But outreach doesn't mean just handing out flyers. It also means being present in the communities, holding one of the public input sessions in a Latinx or Hispanic community. I did a lot of Girl Scout work and we go to where folks live, where the families, where the kids are. You don't just hand out flyers. You actually go to folks, where they live, where they worship, where their businesses are. So outreach is a different method other than handing out flyers and I hope the town will pay attention to that. So respecting communities of interest, we're glad that there was a lot of input from the historic Gullah communities and respect for that and we hope you'll continue to do that. The second thing that we were concerned about was the public outreach and we appreciate very much that there were a lot of the public input sessions. We had folks there at every one of the sessions. I was not able to, I actually went on vacation during that time period. But we did have folks there and it was great that we had them in different locations on the island. The other thing to pay attention to is the timing, the time of day, because there's some working folks that would have liked to have come to an evening meeting. And then we have other folks, waitstaff, who work in the evening and might like a different time of day. So be mindful of that during input, public input sessions, but we do appreciate that that happened. And lastly, on a personal basis, as I've said this before, I'll land where I land and I'll respect the decision. But I hope that anyone running for office, anyone who sits in your seats, with the exception of the manager, because I know he'll do this, will respect the entire island and will think of representing the entire island, no matter where the lines are drawn, no matter where someone lives, no matter what they look like, how they vote, or what they think because we are one island. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? Ma'am? Yes, sir. Yes, Skip?
Thank you for respecting public comment after agenda items. I appreciate that. I'd like to know if Josh Gruber and the town, along with past lawyer, town lawyer Diane Bush, who I longer, I understand is no longer here, if you're still involved with the annexation of Windmill Harbor? And if you are involved with the annexation of Windmill Harbor and that's still of interest to you, I'd like to know why, for what reason. I can tell you that I live in Windmill Harbor and I can tell you that an overwhelming majority of residents are totally against being annexed into this corrupt town that wastes our tax monies and illegally use our tax monies. So I can tell you we're against that. So I would like to know if anybody could answer that question for me. And maybe Josh Gruber can answer it because he was very instrumental in all of that. Are you still involved with annexation of Windmill Harbor?
Mr. Gruber, biggest questions up here. As far as I know, there's no current conversations going on.
Pardon me?
As far as I know, there is no current conversations going on.
Okay. We're going to monitor that because we're against that.
Please, I wish you would, sir.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Yes, please.
This process has been methodical, depends on arithmetic, very theoretical. But what it really boils down to is...
But what it really boils down to is the relationships that council has established with people within a ward. And I'm, I for one am feeling the separation that is proposed from people that I have dealt with over the last several years and have a great deal of respect for. And I just wanted to say publicly that I'm sorry that I'm not going to be representing them anymore, but I also will have to say that I'm looking forward to representing a new group of people, and I will serve them to the best of my ability. But this is a people process as well as a theoretical one. Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the council? Tammy?
I, I guess I could just follow up on that comment. I certainly think Ward Four has had the most adjustments made to it. I welcome that. I'm familiar across the island with the issues and the people who reside on, in all of the communities, and I hope to be able to continue to represent and to help you regardless of where you live. Thank you.
Krista, you make the roll call, please.
I think Jack Daly had a comment.
John? Jack, I didn't see you, Jack. Right in front of me, Jack, I didn't see you.
Hey, Jack Daly, Forest Beach. I would like to thank the Finance and Administrative Committee and town staff for having such a open and easy progress that, or process that was easy to navigate. And I'd like to thank the committee for being very thoughtful and, you know, understanding about some of the issues we had in Forest Beach about getting our community back together and also being grouped with other like-sized communities. And so that's a big win, and the math turns out to be that that's the most accurate, most fair math we have. And we're going to miss Tom Lennox, but we're still going to work with David Ames, who we all love, and that's a compliment to him that we wanted to go to Ward Three. And I thank you for a great process. It really, you know, made me feel good about our town, that we could have an open process like that, it would run so smoothly, and it was so accepting to, you know, popular feedback and input. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Ready? Mr. Bonwell. Okay. Are there any other comments from anybody in, in the, the audience today? Any other comments by member of the council? David?
Do we have to vote on the amendment and then the motion?
Yes, sir. Yes, you'll go ahead and vote on the amendment and then take up the motion to approve thereafter.
On the amendment first? Yes. Okay. Call the roll call on the amendment, okay?
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
And now on the first.
The motion to approve as amended is, or Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Okay, okay. 12B, 12B deals about the comments by the, before the town council. Mr. Gruber, you have a presentation on this? Do your, don't you?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Just to briefly kind of summarize the items before you this evening, it's an amendment to the town code that would essentially change the requirement that a citizen of the island speak before this body during public meetings, and that's being proposed to be changed to any interested party. And that change is being proposed to be reflective of the actual processes that this body has gone through over the last couple of years. And so in order to avoid any kind of ambiguity or any kind of concern, staff has proposed that the language mirror the actual practice of this body, which is to allow any interested party to speak at a public comment.
A motion to approve?
I move to accept the first reading of, of the ordinance that's discussed.
Second.
Second. Discussion by members of the community? Let's get the yes first. Mr. Holton?
Well, that's, that's the good news. I'm glad that you all have seen the importance of respecting citizens' comments and not fight that and try to stop that, prevent that, and, and worse, even removing citizens by police force like has happened in Beaufort County. It, it's outrageous, and, but so finally, everybody's come to reality. You've got to listen to a guy like me, and you should, you take it to heart, you should listen to what I have to say, and you should learn to respect the people that are addressing you, the professionals that come up here and address you. You sit on that diocese, and sometimes you lose a sense of reality and you think that you've got more knowledge than those that address you. And so you ought to embrace citizens like me that come up and share the laws and, and evidence and knowledge on where you're failing. So the most important thing that we all can do, and you all can do, is respect the First Amendment. And you also need to respect the Second Amendment. If we lose the First Amendment or Second Amendment, we no longer have a country. We're in big trouble. And then you need to start abiding by the laws. You need to start doing the things that I and other people suggest to you. So when you leave here, you look good and you've left something good behind. Why would you want to leave office disgraced and not doing your job? It's your, you, you violated your campaign promise. You have to start being honest, you have to start being transparent, accountable, and you've got to start proving to all of us what you have done with our tax monies and has it actually benefited us and given, given us a return. You all pay taxes too. We all pay taxes. Why would we want, not want that? So I encourage you in 2022 to let's start forcing people to show us what they're doing with their money. You know, it's a known fact that if you don't do that and you don't oversee people, they're going to take advantage of that. Never in the history of this country, ever in 300 years, has a forensic audit been forced on a chamber of commerce, on a town council, on a school board, where wrongdoing has not been discovered, waste, wrongdoing, and a lot of times prison the result. So we have to start keeping our eye on the ball. The most important thing you can focus on is where it, and how that money is being used. I leave that, and I hope that's good advice for everybody. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Jim Flucker, and I'm a citizen of Hilton Head Island. I also have had the privilege for the last four years of serving on this town's ATAC Committee, the last year I was chairman. And I thank you for this amendment to the, to the town charter or code, because it's been a question with our committee for the past couple of years. As an attorney, it's always been my position to, basically to enforce the First Amendment. I was not making any changes based on that and based on town council's lead on this, but there were members of my committee that had questions about whether non-citizens should address the ATAC Committee. So I thank you for that, and I also thank you for the, for the privilege and for the confidence you've shown in our committee over the past few years. So thank you.
Thank you for your work too, sir. Anybody else? Okay, bringing it back to council, discussion by members of council. David? I thought you were leaning over. Any, anybody?
Alex.
Alex.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not sure if this is a call for an amendment or not, but I wanted to bring it to our attention. We had Section One, Item C, where we are, those parties assigned to present a matter at a regular meeting must notify the town receptionist or the presiding officer by 12:00 noon on a date of such meeting. I'm just curious to know how that would apply to, if we were to have a special meeting in the morning.
Just adjusted times, Alex. How good we can put it in here if you may, if it helps, sir.
Well, you know, this is more of a legal question. I just want to make sure that we're not missing anything, that's all.
So that language that you've highlighted is actually current language that's in the code now. It's not part of what was proposed to being amended. And so the only time that special meetings are spoken to in the code is under the provision that basically says the mayor may call a special meeting. Other than that, we speak to our regular meetings and the decorum and the, and the order of procedure at regular meetings. So if you look at your agenda for this evening and the outline that's on it, that is specific to regular meetings. When it comes to workshops or if it comes to special meetings, we haven't put anything in the code, and there isn't anything that this amendment would do with regards to those. It's only applicable to regular meetings.
Okay. Okay. 12C, 12C, we're going to talk about the, the.
We didn't vote, I'm sorry. Come on, you didn't tell me that.
That's why I'm here, Mr. Mayor.
Krista?
Certainly, sir. Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Okay, 12C. Jamie's going to give us a presentation on the Ford Shell Ring.
Good afternoon, members of council. Jamie Lopko, senior planner for the record. We'll have two items covering the Ford Shell Ring as we move forward with the potential development of that property. Oops, sorry. We'll look at the location and current conditions of the property. This one is for a joint operating and ownership agreements that will cover the financial and maintenance responsibilities and what the next steps will be from here. This is the current property. It's on Square Pope Road near the intersection, the roundabout with Gumtree Road. There is currently earth and trails there, mostly heavily treed, a figure eight for the Shell Ring, but very limited and primitive access to the property right now. And we bought the property with Beaufort County in 2003 and had an intergovernmental agreement at that time, and this new agreement would supersede that agreement. Beaufort County Council did look at this joint op, ownership and operating agreement and approved it in April of 2021. Since that time, town staff has been working with county staff on an actual site plan and what the details of that would be. So we made sure we came forward to council, council with the most finished product that we could. And then in the agreement, there is an option, the county currently has other, like they call them friendship agreements with other community, other community organizations. So they've added an option in this one to work with the Hilton Head chapter of the Archaeological Society to possibly run tours, do inspections, cleanups, maintenance of the, the Shell Ring property. For the financial and maintenance responsibilities, the county is going to take on all capital projects, so the cost of the actual construction of the park, and if there is any damage to capital, like the fences, the signs, things like that, the county will take care of that or if there is a major alteration. The only exception to that would be town council did ask for a, more of a connection to the water. So if we wanted to add a dock or an overlook or connection to the water, that would be something that the town would have to take on in R C I P. The town's responsibility will be just routine maintenance. We will open and close the park. We will mow and blow the trails and the parking lot to do some minor trimming at a minimal cost to the town. This is the proposed site plan that we have at this point. The outline of the trail that you will see there is basically the trail that is there now, that has been used historically, and in the center is the Shell Rings. And we have put the parking in an area where I think we only have to remove one tree. So we tried to have as little impact as possible on the property when we looked to locate the parking on the property. So here we are for town council with their recommendation, and so if the joint operating and ownership agreement is approved, we'll execute that agreement with the county, and then staff will continue to work with the county to execute their permitting and construction of the park and go through the bidding process and monitor the construction. And then, again, we'll note that if the town council wants to move forward with the option to do some connection to the water, we will have to put that through an R C I P program.
That's 12C. We'll leave, leave for a second.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any questions for Jamie on?
Jamie, it's my understanding since we're moving forward with joint ownership on this property, that the town will maintain its insurance with regard to its interest in the property as well as any liability, and the same would apply to the county. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jamie on this one?
This is a resolution, and only one reading is required.
Yes, sir.
Comments from, from the public? Nothing? Okay, bringing it back, there's no more comments, suggestions from the council? Krista?
Just to clarify, was there a motion to approve the resolution?
No. Okay, Alex approved it. Go ahead, Bill.
No, no, move to approve the resolution on the item advanced by Jamie.
Second.
Okay, now call the roll call.
Sounds good, sir. Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Okay, we go on to 12D now. Jamie?
Yes, sir. Again, with the, with the Ford Shell Ring property, there's a secondary consideration on this. This is an ordinance, so it will be, this is first reading, related to easements that are existing and new for the property. So again, we'll look at the location and conditions. We're going to be terminating an easement and then creating an access and utility easement. So the same property, again, with the current conditions, the current access is where it's shown with the green dash line where it enters on Square Pope Road. So in 2003, when we purchased the property with the county, there was an existing access easement that ran from Square Pope Road to the small little triangle property in the back, this little guy right here. It's landlocked, so the only access to that property is through the Ford Shell Ring property. So there was an existing access easement on the property when it was purchased by the town and county, and there also is a septic and drain filled area at the rear of the property that was existing when we bought the park. So with the proposed development, we are shifting the access easement slightly to the left away from the marsh to give it more of a buffer area. And then now that we have sewer available, we'd like to eliminate the septic and drain filled area on our property, because we don't want to have that put close to the marsh. And so the access is to that rear property, and so we will have a parking area, and at the end of the parking area, we're going to put a chain up that will block any other vehicular access from getting beyond the parking area. And there will be a special lock put on there with a combination that the Barnwell family will have access to in order to use that access easement to get to their property. And we've had discussions with the Barnwells. They are in favor of the termination and new easement, and they understand that the town and county are not responsible for people, the public who are on the Ford Shell Ring property that may potentially wander over to that property because there is no restricted access at this point. But we have let them know should they want to put up a gate or a fence to block that access, that they are more than welcome to do so. So this is the access easement and the drain area. I wanted to show you the full property first so you knew where it was. It's kind of all the way on the right-hand side of the property, and then we'll blow that up. So the dark area that you see is the new easement. You can see right there at the entrance, the dash line to the right is the existing easement, and we've shifted it to the left slightly and widened it for two-way traffic. And then here in the back, you can see that's the septic and drain field area, very large area close to the marsh. So that will be terminated as well as the existing 15-foot wide access easement, and the new easement that's there will be created to retain that access. It will be an access and utility easement, should there be any desire to run utilities to the property in the rear. Now, the property in the rear is zoned conservation. It was part of a PD2 overlay for the Barnwell property where the tabby is. So all of the density and development rights from that property and the water were transferred over where the tabby was, so those two properties there next to the Ford Shell Ring are zoned conservation, so they have very limited uses that they could actually put on that property. And our next steps is we anticipate the county council review and recommendation yesterday. I have not heard from Stephanie at this point if there was any issues with that, but they will have three readings of the easement to bring it forward, and then we have the recommendation here for first reading, and it will have to have second reading should you choose to support it.
Any questions for Jamie? Any questions from, from the public? You have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we advance proposed ordinance 2022-03.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of moving it forward, right hand, good. Call the roll call, Krista?
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Mayor, may I interrupt the agenda? It's my understanding that Jamie Lopko has taken a job elsewhere in Florida, and I think Jamie, I remember after Hurricane Matthew seeing Jamie and her son up at the Tobart Cemetery at the north end of the island cleaning it up. I think that speaks to who Jamie is and the way she saw her role in this community. And Jamie, I've worked with you in a number of different ways on this council, and I have always felt your sincerity and your absolute passion to provide for this community what you think is most important for this community. Thank you very much.
Ms. Orlando, do we need an executive session?
Yes, sir. Two items, personnel matters related to the appointments to the design review board as well as to the Beaufort County Citizens Advisory Committee, both pursuant to FOIA Section 30-4-781.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session for the two reasons as set forth by the town manager.
Second.
All in favor, please raise the right hand. Now we'll join to the executive session. And now, join to the executive session.